Next item on the agenda is action on a proposed council policy statement, eighty-eight, Code of Ethics and Conduct. City Manager Levitt?
Yes, Council President and City Council. I will briefly just outline what's in the City Council Code of Conduct. This has been an issue that's come up a couple of times, at least since I've been here as City Manager, and probably came up more during the spring of two thousand and eleven this year. Council President Brunner took upon himself, after becoming Council President, to put together a sample Council Code of Conduct, which some revisions were made, and this is a draft that's being presented to the City Council for your review and consideration. My intent would be that you can, and you have the ability to pass it tonight, but if you want to make amendments or consider further issues, then that's always possible, too. Some of the basic, I'll just go over some of the basic parameters that are in the Council Code of Conduct, our responsibilities as City Council members, conduct of public officials, performance of duties, City Council conduct during council meetings, there's a conflict of interest statement, there's a reference to state law regarding the acceptance of gifts, confidentiality of information, and policy role of members. Additionally, this would not only be setting the standard for the current council, but also would be for future council members, when they come on the council, to sort of see what some of the expectations are of them as City Council members, and it would be a living document, in my opinion, that would be able to be revised on an ongoing basis as the council wants to refine this policy. With that, I'll turn back to Council President Brunner, if he has any comments on this.
First off, Councilmember Stever has a question.
Yeah, just a point of order on this. Because it was noticed as an action on a proposed council statement, can we take and debate changes without moving it? Or proposed changes? I just want to make sure that we don't do anything improper.
You can make changes, and you don't have to take action. It's just notice that if you take action, that you have that potential to take action.
So, we can debate the proposed policy as it stands without having it on the board for, or on, as a proposed motion?
You can propose to continue it if you want.
Okay, I just, I think as important as this policy statement is, I want to make sure that there's no questions if we say, okay, here's some revisions, bring it back to us at the next meeting. That was my, thank you.
Thank you. I guess, as long as we're doing that, and I know that there are some revisions, some minor, some probably major revisions that can be proposed, I guess what I would like to do is just go through the policy and then be able to open each thing up for discussion.
Sure.
Actually, before you, if I, then I'd like to make my-
Councilmember Ashkin?
Thank you, Council President. Having looked over this document, and while I questioned the nature in which this was brought up in the first place, and the reasons behind it, I fully support the idea of an ethics policy. My question, first of all, is whether things that are in this document are covered by our existing laws and ordinances, and that's probably a question for Walt. So, is there new information in here, or are we looking at restating something that's already on the books?
There's new provisions, pardon me, there are new provisions in here that aren't specifically covered by an existing statute or city ordinance.
All right. And so with that in mind, kind of looking at this document and the significance of it that I believe we have, I wonder if the, and kind of seeing that we're getting ready to go into this long discussion of each point by point, I wonder if a more appropriate way to do this would be to select either a council committee that would work through this document and bring it with revised changes to the council, or perhaps even a citizens' committee that would look through this document. Gentleman that spoke to the council, former council member probably would be great to have on such committee, because he has a strong opinion about what should be in this document, and then, you know, with those revisions, that could come back to the council, you know, having been worked through and looked at very thoroughly, instead of, you know, doing it right now and, you know, ten o'clock in the evening.
Well, I just assume that, I think it's a policy that's been brought forward, and I think that, you know, I knew very, very well that there'd be some discussion on some issues. I think that we can, you know, go through some things probably fairly rapidly, I think other things may take a little bit of time. If we don't complete the whole review tonight, we can continue it. You know, I would, I would hope that council members have looked at this and have made, you know, certain notes or whatever, so that they're prepared to say, offer some amendments to it and things like that.
Well, I do believe that I think a council committee that looks through the changes, at making changes to this, at least the council committee, would be appropriate, and then bringing this revised document back to the council. So, just for the sake of see if there's any support for this, I'll make a motion that there's a council committee made to look through this document and then bring it back to the council with any changes that need to be made.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Ashkin, and a second by Councilmember Liebert, to make a committee for, I guess for the council president to appoint a committee, is that what you're saying? To appoint a council committee to review this. Are you suggesting a certain number?
I leave that up to the council president, to see how we need to go through this, but I think it's-
I think this would have to be, if there's something like that that goes, I think that the committee would have to be appointed, and it would probably have to be conducted in some kind of open sessions, no matter how, what the number is, we post the meetings. I'd also, I also then, if this passes, would want to put a timeline on it, because I think this is important, that we go through it. I think, you know, I think there's, you know, been some comments, whatever, as far as motivation, you know, I looked at this from the aspect that, that there's been various discussions at various times, that sometimes, you know, I think we have to agree to disagree, we have to agree to debate, and we have to agree to be civil, and conduct our meetings with some kind of decorum, and I think we have to go forward that way. When I proposed this, I guess I was looking, trying to look at a big picture, but I also felt there was one issue that needed to be discussed, and that was the use of electronic devices, simply from comments from council, comments from public, and comments from some people who were watching us on television. So, that was a combination. I'm not, my intent purpose was not to aim this at any one individual, and I looked at this as a tool for future council members.
I certainly do not consider this to be anything that council president directed against any particular individual in the council, I want to make that very clear.
Okay, thank you. We have a, we have a motion, but by Councilmember Ashkin, and a second by Councilmember Liebert, but I have to comment from, Councilmember Liebert, you have a comment, you had, you were the second?
Yeah, I do, I just, I think Councilmember Ashkin's idea to have a committee, I think is a good idea, because I think this policy, even though there's no mechanism to enforce anything, I think it's kind of like the police policing themselves, and I think that we need to have more input than just ourselves, but perhaps, perhaps the public as well, to have them hold us accountable and to a higher standard. So, I hope my fellow council members' majority will help support this motion to have perhaps some council members and some, some members of the public join-
We're talking, we're talking about, the motion was for a council committee.
Yeah, oh, for a council committee, then.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I had, though, thank you.
Councilmembers, I just wanted to clarify that, Sam, so, yeah. Councilmember Stever?
Well, you know, I can go either way on this. I think that one of the ways to rectify any questions, I mean, we all have, probably have notes on our drafts of changes we would like to see, inclusions, exclusions, but if you're doing a council committee, basically, it's us. So, if we're going to do it, why don't we just find a time to have a study session and have a collaborative thing, because I don't think you really can take and just say, Councilmember A, B, and C, you're on the committee, come up with the proposals. I think we each have a vested interest in it, I think we all want to do what's right for the city and for the council, and the boards, and the commissions, and the committees that the city appoints. So, rather than doing that, having a select committee, I think we all have an equal voice as elected officials into that, I would suggest that we do it more as a study session than, than a committee, because that implies that only a portion of us would have input.
Is that a friendly amendment?
A suggestion, let's put it that way. I, I think doing it by a study session would probably give everybody the opportunity to speak to the matter.
I, I'm, I think that's a very good idea. I think that having a good discussion on this and at a designated time would be worth what I guess I'd envisioned. Thank you.
Councilmember McDonald?
I see no reason to have a study session or a committee on this. We've already spent about fifteen minutes discussing whether or not to send this to a committee, we probably could have been through the first two pages already. We're all here, I think we should talk about it, I don't think we're going to decide the policy tonight, but I think we can go through our revisions, and then this will come back in another meeting. So, those would be my comments, thank you.
Councilmember Don Guerra?
Thank you. That's, I guess what I was thinking, is the committee going to be made up of us, and then if we have a study session, I'd rather not have to schedule another outside time. My time is kind of limited.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint a committee, a council committee, to review the City Council Code of Conduct policy. All in favor? I was asked to call the mo, but go ahead, Councilmember Ashkin.
I think I'd like to go ahead and withdraw the motion, because I think that we'd like to go through this right now, if we want to go through this. That's fine, if that's okay.
I'll rescind my second.
All right, very good.
Okay, let's, purpose, anyone have any comments on purpose? Councilmember McDonald?
Yes, two brief comments, just in the first line and in the third line, I think we can remove the word "the," just to clean it up, so it says, promote ethical conduct from elected and appointed officials, as opposed to from the elected and appointed officials. And that same revision in both the first and third line.
Anybody have any opposition to that? I think that's just a grammatical change.
Correct.
Okay, statement of policy, any comments on that? Responsibility of the public office, any response, comments on that? Compliance with the law, any comments on that? Conduct of officials, comments? Councilmember Stever?
Yes, I guess I'm kind of reverting back to prior employment, but on every ethics class I ever taken, and every ethics policy I've always, I've ever seen, it all, it always addresses conduct not being only to the primary position, but what you do away from that position. So, I'd like that statement to read something to the effect of, is that the public and private conduct of public officials, so that it's all inclusive, it's not just when you're doing council duties, but also when you're away from the council, because I think, or committee, because I think what we do in our private lives does, sometimes does affect our ability to do things for a committee, or a board, or whatever people are appointed for. And certainly, that's quite evident with seeing some of the things that have happened nationally recently, where those private lives pull into it. If you're, you're not in this particular business to be scrutinized by the public, you have no business being in it. Whether you're appointed to a committee, a commission, a board, or you're an elected official, I think that behavior has to be above reproach, both while you're doing the function and away from. My two cents worth.
Okay, so your comment is to include, include that the public and private conduct of public officials shall be, okay. Councilmember McDonald, you are next.
Right. This, and I apologize, I didn't bring the email that I had sent you with some revisions, but I remember this is one that I had in there, and I don't remember the exact language, but similar to what Councilmember Stever had just said, that I think there should be some comment in there about council members, whether you're in your public or your private life, you're essentially always representing the city, people know you as a council member, and so I think there should be some type of comment in there like that as well.
And if I could, Councilmember McDonald, while you're at it, you, you had made mention me that some kind, some comment to the effect that public officials may disagree during the debate of issues, however the debate should be civil and cordial.
Yep, and that would be the other comment.
And, and I've just, am I correct, you know, you did send me a comment on that?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that would also include then, a comment, that you're suggesting a comment that public officials may disagree during debate of issues, and however the debate should be civil and cordial.
Correct.
And your other, your other comment again is?
It's basically what Councilmember Stever had just-
Okay, what Councilmember Stever said, okay. Councilmember Ashkin?
Thank you, Council President. What I'm trying to figure out here, something I've been wrestling with, is a council member in a situation that is outside of the council, is engaged in any activity, is that, at what point is it relevant or appropriate to mention that the office of council member? So, how does that apply, and I'd like to see that policy address that somehow? In which instances it is, it is relevant and appropriate to use a title of member of the council, which instances it is not? And the kind of the flip side of that, I think it's important to address, and I find that to be somewhat puzzling, that when you have a member of United States Congress speaking, no one presumes that they're speaking for the entire US Congress. And the same with the state assembly, but when you have a member of the council speaking, then there is assumption that the council member speaks for the entire council. And unless there's been something said in the open meeting, I always try to clarify that point, that unless a decision's been made in an open meeting, nobody's speaking for the council. So, I would like to see something in the policy that addresses that, and clarifies that no particular member of the council speaks for the council unless there's a decision that's been made.
Okay, so you're looking for some language in there, so that, as to when you're saying it, this is my personal opinion as compared to council opinion or something?
If such language is possible, that's the one side of it, and the other side, of course, is?
I think-
Have you been able to locate some?
Well, I think-
And advocacy.
That was addressed later in the policy.
It's addressed later in the policy, and that's what I was-
Yeah, represent advocacy, advocacy.
All right, which page is it?
Page three of five.
Page three of five. Advocacy says, "Public officials shall represent the official policies and positions of the city council board, commissions, or committee to the best of their ability when designated as delegates for this purpose. Public officials who want to represent their personal opinions and positions shall state that they are not representing the City of Geneseeville City Council Board, Commissioner, or Committee, but expressing their personal view."
But yet, at the same time, it is clear that they are still-
A council member.
A council member.
You know, I think, I don't think that there's a way to disassociate your relationship or the fact that you're a city council member, but I think it's important that if you have a personal opinion, and you're not speaking for the council, you're not there representing the council in an official capacity, or you're representing your personal opinion, that you state it's your personal opinion. Just for example, I was asked to be on WCLO, and they brought up concealed carry, and I made it very clear that, that I was not speaking for the council on a certain point, that it was my personal opinion of whatever. Because the council had not taken any action, we hadn't discussed it, it hadn't been brought forth, so it was my personal opinion.
So, I guess I would be looking then for, I think that's great, but I think then that going further is that unless stating that they're speaking for the council, no member is speaking for the council.
You know, I just, if, if I could, and I, and I hesitate to do this, Councilmember Ashkin, but it was brought to my attention that I think you published an article, wrote an article for a New York publication, and it was, the byline or the, on it, it was, "City Council Member Yuri Rashkin."
Entirely possible.
And, and you wrote that, that article as, as city council member, and really, that, to me, there was a lot of personal opinions in that article. That article should have been written as Yuri Rashkin. I had no problem with you writing the, writing the article, I think, but, but I think there was a difference there, you weren't writing that article on behalf of the city council.
But if I have a master's degree, or if I'm a doctor, isn't that appropriate to mention that as just part of the qualific, you know, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, that's exactly what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, but I, I think that we can all, we can all decipher when we're speaking for the council, or when we're speaking for ourselves, and I'm just using that as an example, I think, I think you were speaking for yourself there.
I always am.
Okay, and so, and so therefore, therefore, you know, if somebody wants to say, oh, that's Yuri Rashkin, that article is written by Yuri Rashkin, he's a city council member, they can understand that, but for you to say you're writing it as city council member Yuri Rashkin, makes it sound like you're writing it for the city council.
I guess I'd like to hear from others, because I'm confused.
Councilmember McDonald?
Well, I-
Stever, I must have not turned yours off then. I yield to my fine colleague.
Well, I understand where, where both are coming from here, and I think the difference, the difference between being referred to as doctor or lawyer, and being referred to as council member, is whether you're a council member, or a representative, or a US senator, you're an elected official. And when you're an elected official, it's different than the private sector. And if you wanted to say Yuri Rashkin, master's degree, and whatever, that's different than council member Yuri Rashkin, because you're not speaking on behalf of all people with a master's degree, or with that particular, if I say something as a lawyer, I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire Rock County Bar Association, I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a lawyer. It's different in the public field. That's how I look at it, and I think that's what, what Council President Brunner was trying to get at with his comments.
But I, so I, I think it's basically covered on page three. We can look at that language and see if we can strengthen that perhaps, or revise it. Mr. Levitt?
I guess, I guess I do have a question, because from a logistics standpoint, if one member, Councilwoman McDonald, for instance, has brought up some, some changes, for instance, earlier, and so my question is, how do we know what changes the majority of the council wants? I do have a concern, because every time a change is, is the person assuming every time a change is brought up, that I'm, we're writing it down, it's going to go in?
I'm trying to make some notes, and I'm doing it by consensus, if there isn't objection to the change, then I'm making a note on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Which my button were.
Well, I would actually prefer like-
Can we go each, each one?
Yeah, I just would prefer if you just ask by, you do it by consensus, but just saying, is this by consensus, and then if there's an objection?
Well, that's what I started. Okay, I think that the initial thing, I did ask if it was by consensus, and there was no problem on the grammatical change.
Right.
So, on the conduct of public officials, is it by consensus, any objection to including public and private conduct?
I'll be honest, I'm kind of struggling with why you want to put in private conduct to be, I just don't, I mean, I, it's a, this is, these are guidelines of right and wrong as it relates to the city council policy statement. So, I'm struggling with the, with the fact of private. Does that mean I'm not going to be an upstanding citizen? No, but the point it asks here is the city council policy statement. So, I, you know, if it's the consensus of the council, fine, but I just don't see a need to differentiate private and public. It's hard to lead a public, public life without having a private life, and I just don't see the need to, to make specific comment, because if you're going to, I don't know, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Councilmember Stever?
Well, I'll give you my two cents worth on it, and that is that, once you take on the position as an elected public official, you have opened yourself to scrutiny, whether it is when you're doing the council member portion, or when you're doing your private life. And let's just look at some of the things, and I don't want to belabor this, but in recent weeks, there has been a lot of stuff in the national news on how a person's private life affected their public position. And I guess I would have to say if I end up taking and doing something away from here that brings disgrace to myself, I also disgrace this council. So, if on the way coming home tonight, something happens and I'm, let's just hypothetically say that I get arrested for OWI, does that not affect my ability to be a council member? And I would suggest that it does. So, I have to be cognizant of the fact that my private life has a direct influence on my ability to be a public official, and that's why I'm saying that we should include in there that the public and private conduct of public officials shall be above reproach and avoid the appearance of impropriety. And I think Council President Brunner, being in law enforcement for quite some times, knows that as law enforcement officers, they are held to a higher standard in both private, their private actions and their, their public actions, and I guess we need to be at that same level.
Councilmember McDonald?
I will, I will yield to Voskile, I have nothing further to say from what Stever said.
Councilmember Voskile?
Well, I guess, you know, I, all I'm going to say is, it's one's perception of whether or not it's affected public opinion, and my opinion is, if someone were to, to do something that you or anybody else would see is not the proper thing to do, that's why we have courts, and that would be, that would be decided in a totally additional system outside of the city council authority. So, I view it as, if someone does something in their private life that's affected, you know, there are consequences to your actions regardless if it's public or private, but if it happens in your private life, you know, what's happened in the past with some of the individuals lately, that's a perception of it's affected public opinion. Let, let the courts decide, or let the committee decide of that particular organization. I just don't feel that it's-
I think we agree to disagree.
Well, I just don't feel, and yeah, you're not going to change my mind. I think the public officials is sufficient, again, this is a guideline, it's a working document, it's a, it's a right or wrong. I just don't think we should legislate people's private lives.
Councilmember Ashkin?
Well, I couldn't agree more with Councilmember Voskile. I think additionally, what are we trying to accomplish, well, and what are we accomplishing by making these statements? I think one of the things is, it's raising a bar for regular residents who may consider being on the council, and now they have to consider extra hard whether this is an other sacrifice that they would have to make in order to serve their community. I'm not sure what we're accomplishing, not to mention that there's all sorts of possibilities where by one standard, this is acceptable, by another standard, it's not acceptable. A member of the council goes to New York and has a gay marriage, that would be perfectly appropriate in one place, but now we're just looking at all sorts of standards, and I'm not sure what this particular change accomplishes.
Councilmember Liebert?
I, I agree with Councilmember Voskole. I mean, I don't think we should be legislating our private lives. I mean, if I want to leave here and, and go drink 10 beers, that's my prerogative, and my image is up to me, and the ultimate deciders are the voters, the people who vote for us. And if I have a negative image, and they want to vote me out of office or recall me, then they can do that. But I think we should only be legislating what we do in a public official capacity. I understand, in public office, image is everything. It's not, it may not always be what's true, but what the image is, but that's up to individuals. This is still America. We still have the, the choice to say what we want to do and, and do in our private lives. And if this has to come to a vote for this, this wording, then I'm fine with doing that, and I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Steber?
All I will say is, and I'll, I'll go back to the, the, at least the standard that I, I feel is appropriate is, when you take any, you circulated the ballots, and you, you said, I want to do this, you opened yourself up to scrutiny, no matter whether you're on, sitting up on the council, or whether you're at home, your private life has become public. And that is why, when you talk about ethics, we, we talk about things that need to be above reproach and avoid, avoid the appearance of impropriety. Now, let's, let's look at this from a different standpoint. Let's say that I'm the executor of someone's property, or I am the person that has been given the ability to oversee funds of another. And, and because I'm an unscrupulous person, I take in, I, I embezzle money from them. Okay? Now, does that not reflect on my ability to sit in this chair, my private life, but I open myself up to scrutiny? And that's why, I, I don't think what we're saying is that everything you do has got to be picture perfect. What we're saying is that it should be above reproach and avoid the appearance of impropriety. And I think those, that little phrase speaks volumes to character and what we should be. We're supposed to be the city, I, I don't want to sound gender specific, but we're, we're the city fathers. We're the, that's the old term. I don't know what you would call it this, you know, we are the, we, we, we're supposed to be the leaders of the city, and if we don't, if we don't come across as being of leadership quality, then what are we? If we're, if we're saying, well, you know, it's okay when we're up here that we, we're above reproach and have that appearance of impropriety, but when we're away from here, do what you want. Present any image.
I, I think in order to see where we're at is, on consensus, I, I, I understand what the, what the suggestion is. My own personal belief is, I, I think the first sentence of that paragraph says it all. It says, "The conduct of public officials shall be above reproach and avoid the appearance of impropriety." I don't, I don't think we have to make a statement any further. So because we're looking at consensus, could we take a vote? Yes or no? I think the, if you're in favor of including public and private, vote yes. If you're, would just like to keep the language in that sentence the way it is, vote no. So the language will stay as is. The, the second suggestion that we had in that paragraph was, "Public officials may disagree during debate of issues. However, the debate shall be civil and cordial." Do we agree with that?
Yep. Well, this last debate was civil and cordial.
Okay. Performance of duties. Any, any suggestions there? Public meetings.
Again, this is, moving down to public meetings, numbers three and four, comments that I had emailed to you regarding electronic devices. I, I understand the concern with electronic devices, cell phones, iPads, anything like that, as far as texting, playing on the internet, playing games, being a distraction. But I think it's also important to understand that electronic devices are the future, and that electronic devices, like for me, for example, it has my calendar. I take notes on there. I do research on there sometimes during the council meeting, depending on what a speaker says. I'll get on the internet for that. Also, on a personal note, my wife is six months pregnant now, and I have my phone everywhere that I go, so that I can know what's going on if she needs something. So I, I think those two should, should more specifically reference texting, game playing, somehow being a distraction. And, and I know that, Council President, you had, had emailed back some suggestions, and, and like I said, I forgot to print those out, but I, I think you had three good suggestions for those changes.
So can we look at paragraph one? Do we have consensus on paragraph one? "Public officials shall prepare for meetings to conduct the business of the city in a meaningful manner."
That one's fine.
I'll say we have, okay. Paragraph two, "Public officials shall refrain from interrupting speakers, making personal comments not related to the public discussion, or allowed to interfere with the order of conduct." Do we have consensus on that?
That was fine.
Okay. Number three was, "Electronic devices, cell phones, iPads, smartphones, et cetera, shall be set aside, silenced, or turned off so as not to interfere, distract, or disrupt the conduct of the public meeting." Do we have any problem with that?
Yep.
No, wait a minute. You know, I mean, just with the, no, I, you know, what I was gonna say, you know, if, if you're looking at what he was, was going, I, if you want to listen to my, if, if you have a problem, just say, so let me continue with where I was going, okay? So we'll, we'll come back to that, Yuri? Okay? Is that okay? And then, then I, I looked at putting in a, a number four, "Electronic devices may be used in the conduct of, of the meeting should the public official need to use the calendar or refer to notes regarding the subject under discussion."
Yep.
Now, is that reasonable?
That's a reasonable change.
Well, I, I, I made that as paragraph four. "Electronic devices may be used in the conduct of the meeting should the public official need to use the calendar or refer to notes regarding the subject under discussion." Okay. Councilmember Raschkin?
Thank you, Council President. I think if we look at the school board, they're sitting with laptops, and I think that's, as Councilmember McDonald pointed out, it's, it's the future. Whether we're gonna have iPads where our agendas are gonna be delivered, I'm just, I guess, in this particular instance, I'm more concerned about restricting future councils in ability to conduct business.
Well, I, I think the thing is, is as things evolve, if, if the city council would go to a paperless and, and a laptop thing, then that's what, this is a policy, and policies are meant to be amended and corrected, to, to get in line with the time. And that's why, you know, I, I suggested that, 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 that be there as far as calendars or notes. And then I had another suggestion, that electronic devices may be used to search the internet to research a question under discussion only after the public official has advised the council president or board commissioner or committee chair of their intent and purpose to use the device. And the reason is, I firmly believe that if we have somebody that's going to be researching something while we're under discussion, then they ought to share that research with us.
I don't want to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
All right.
I mean, we're having this kind of exchange right now.
I know, but it seems to be kind of varying between pressing lights and speaking out of turn, so I just don't want to affect anyone. This is all in good spirit, I want to be clear. I guess I'm concerned that right now, as far as I can tell, the biggest obstacle as far as council getting laptops, because there's been a discussion for several years, has been just the financial aspect of it. And, you know, I can understand that. But now, it seems like we're creating another obstacle, because now we have a policy that we need to go back to and change and make corrections to. And I'm concerned that this is just kind of pushing us back instead of going forward.
I, I think, Yuri, because it was your light, and we're going back and forth to try to understand this, that, that, that's what policies are about. How many times, you know, since you've been sitting on the council, have we amended policies? There's been various policies that have been amended over, over the years, when, when things change. And that's why I'm saying that, you know, this is a guideline, this is a policy, and policies are meant to be reviewed and, and updated and changed as there's change within the, within the thing. And then, you know, my next, my next comment would be that electronic devices should not be used for text messaging, social media, or entertainment, or any other miscellaneous purpose during the, during the meeting. And then, and then my last comment would be the old number four, that should a council member or other public official, because of an emergency or urgent need, be required that they just quietly excuse themselves from the dais and, or the meeting, and go to an, an adjacent area and conduct their business.
If, if I can, because that's where I'm really confused. If, let's say, Councilman McDonald, with, with his wife expecting, or with myself, with my daughter, who is here because of rehearsal, and, and now it's over, and so I'm trying to figure out, you know, where she is at, I feel reluctant to check my phone to see if there's been a text message. Because I don't want to cause a situation with, with the council, but, you know, maybe, you know, there's, it's, it's almost like clarifying between what, where you can check, but you can't send out messages.
Well, I think, you know, if you get a text message, you know you've received one, and if you think you have to answer it, then you excuse, you excuse yourself and go do it. I mean, the phone, the phone, the phone lets you know that you got one. You know, the thing is, I think, you know, there's been some discussion at the council that, that by people, text, text message and stuff, it, it's distracting to the other person. The person doing it is distracted and probably is missing some of the discussion. And there's been times where council members have simply gone back from the table and been texting, and, and the public has said, you know, what's going on? I, you know, I got some comments that, you know, it was very obvious that there was a distraction, but it also distracts the people next to them. So that's, that's kind of the reason for that.
I mean, I certainly understand the, the need for clarification. And, but, but if we're going to put this down in writing, then we need to be precise, I, I think, to a certain extent. I, I must say, I feel really kind of funny about this whole thing, because it just feels like we're not doing what we should be doing. Because I just, it's, I mean, we're, we're sitting here discussing this fine line language, because if we're gonna go through it, I guess we gotta do it right. But I'm just not sure this is a discussion worth having. But, all right. So can we then agree that the phone can be checked for information, but no new information cannot be sent out without leaving the dais?
Well, I, I, I think the thing is, is that, that, you know, we should look at things that are emergency and urgent. I think Councilmember McDonald's point, you know, but if he has his phone, and, and it buzzes, and it's a text message, you know, and, and he feels it's an important thing, and he has to handle it, or he has to return a call, you know, you don't do it here. You, you go out there and do it.
How do you decide between what, I mean, if text messages come in, what's important and what's not?
Well, I, I guess, I guess that, the council member has to know whether or not he's expecting something, you know, and, and if he is, you know, that's fine. But, but I, I, I think the whole thing is, is that I don't think we want people sitting at the dais, text messaging, and being distracting, not only to themselves, but to other people when there's presentations and items under discussion.
Can we maybe limit it to council members being respectful?
You know, yeah. Councilmember McDonald, I think you were up there first. I think you was.
Oh. I, I was just gonna offer another comment, is that if someone does need to use a device for any reason, and if they're on it for a while, I would have no problem with council president just asking the person what they're doing, because I think it would be fine to explain to the public what someone is doing, that, you know, yeah, I'm not surfing the internet, I'm not distracted, you know, I, I'm up here researching an issue, or I got a text message, and I had to excuse myself or something. I, I think that would be perfectly appropriate for the council president to do, so maybe that would address some concerns as well.
Councilmember Steber?
You know, I, I really don't have a problem with the fact that when we're here to do council business, we're here to do council business. And I think out of due respect, we, we expect people in the audience to, to silence their cell phones, and to be respectful of the council meeting and the proceedings. So I don't have a problem with saying, you know, if you got a cellphone, an iPad, a smartphone, put it on silence, set it off to the side, and don't be playing with it for the sake of your personal entertainment. So, I mean, really, everything that you have said so far, Council President Brunner, I am in total agreement with, with, and I think should be included. Because I think what, what, and what I heard you saying, George, is that, that if you're up here to do business, by God, you're up here to do business. That doesn't preclude you, like, I've got my cellphone sitting right here, it's silenced, but if I got a text message right now from my, my wife or a family member that says, hey, you need to get home, or I need to talk to you right away, I can just say, you know, excuse me, I need to step out. That's not a problem. What I don't think we want to do is have council members doing this.
How do you put that in the policy?
Well, I, I think it just said that, is that you, that you said it, silence it, and so that it's not becoming a distraction or disruption to the public meeting. If you need to do something, as we've stated in here, in the other sections, you, you do it either with the approval that you're doing research, that you're checking your calendar, but you don't sit up here and, and send text messages. The only other comment I would make about, about this is looking at the particular format of the, this paragraph under public meetings. I think number three is the heading of electronic devices and everything, after that should be subs, because they all fall under that electronic devices parameters.
So have a separate paragraph for electronic?
Yeah, you've got it right here, three, and then like your, your four, five, are subs of that. Because I think that pulls it into that one, and it's not a separate section in of itself.
Councilmember Voskole?
Yeah, I anticipated this to be probably the most complex section, so I took a few notes and wrote them down in my car today. You know, I, I think that, I, I think, first of all, we all have to agree, what's the goal? The goal here with electronic devices is not to be distracted, because we're encouraging citizen participation, correct? That's the goal. We can all agree on that. We're not gonna find the golden rule of what exactly we need to put in this policy, because this is an evolving discussion, all, all around, independent of Janesville. These are, this is new technology, we're not quite sure how it interacts with encouraging public trust. And, you know, we're, we're in a situation where I, I wrote down, you know, we, we are trying to gain public trust and make public trust. And we need to ensure transparency so we can promote accountability. That's what our government, that's what our constituents want of us. And, you know, when we are looking up information and we're not communicating that, that doesn't, that kind of goes against what our goal is, is to gain the trust of, you know, of, of the constituents. So I, I guess the way I look at it is, if you can't pay attention, and if we expect on the, on the agenda, we have people to silence, and we have people who come to speak at the, at the public podium, you, you gotta know when you're using your phone. And, and I'm just gonna say one thing, we all seem to survive before we had this technology. So I can understand the importance of everyone wanting to get just-in-time notification on what the baseball score is, or if their daughter, or, you know, my kids are. But there's also boundaries that we need to put in place, and that's all we're asking. Put some boundaries in place. Because as we're having discussions with trying to get citizens to participate with us, it's not a good thing if we're not being transparent and accountable for our actions. And that's the thing that we need to, to remember. And here's my, in the words of Mark Twain, "Always do right. This will gratify some and astonish the rest." To me, that's what it's all about. So I think, Yuri, to your point, am I gonna get line item by light item? I can use it here, I can use it there, I can't use it for this, I can use it for that. That's really not what the goal is. And it's a very difficult goal to get to, because this is an evolving technology. So I think maybe the way to look at it is, if you were on the other side, and you were trying to communicate to the council, would you like it if someone was looking down, or not even looking at you? Or, it's just common courtesy, it's what you do. I'm done.
Councilmember Raschkin?
Kathy, yes, of course. But how do we write it down?
We just did.
Because the respectful language, I think, is what, what needs to be in there. Because when we when we start getting into details, that's when you start running into specific issues. Because, yes, what you're talking about as far as being respectful to constituents and, and doing your job, and, and boundaries, yes, of course. But, but the, the verbiage, I think, is, 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 we haven't found one yet, I guess. And maybe staff can do that, we can come back to that later.
I, I guess the thing that I look at is you make an encompassing policy, and then you, you look at it from a distraction, you know, you don't, you use the distraction line. I think if you're using it for information, you go to the, the council president and you indicate that you're looking for information. Remember that all of us came to this council meeting with our, the same information, for the most part. And if you have an individual who is, has a smartphone, but maybe two or three other people don't have a smartphone, but they're looking things up on the internet?
Doesn't mean they're any less smart.
I didn't mean that, I didn't say that. But my point is, I think that that's important, that they're doing that, but then I think they should disclose if they find out something, so that the rest of the council can be informed. So, you know, I, I think that what George has put forth, and maybe if this is more of a, of a section that people are concerned with, maybe this is one of those where we kind of put this aside, and, you know, you review it, and people try to tweak it. But I, I, I think the way that, that, that council president Brunner has it laid out is, is global, and, and we're not going to get specific.
It's a good start. Councilmember Don Gara Adams?
I'm just curious, are we, are, are we concerned about getting contacted for emergency? Is that, is that the concern, that if, like, if you're saying if your daughter needs to get you, or, or your wife, is that the reason, I guess, or?
Are you asking?
I'm asking.
Okay, well.
Is it an emergency situation?
As, as I said, from, from my perspective, there's the, the potential emergency, and especially getting closer to the, to the ninth month of pregnancy. But also, just that my calendar's on the electronic device. And the way, the, the way the policy is written now, electronic devices shall be set aside. Okay, that doesn't say should be set aside, doesn't say may be set aside. It says they shall be set aside, which I think doesn't make it that global policy we're looking for, which is why I think we're having this discussion, and, and why I sent some suggestions to Council President Brunner, and why he was going through those earlier, because that's what we're trying to get at, is that there are times when it's acceptable, and we're not going to get an all-encompassing list. But I think we're on the right track with this policy. And, you know, to, to Councilmember Ashkin's point, you know, maybe it, maybe it would be good to put something in this policy about council members shall be respectful in their use of electronic devices, and then leave it up to each council member to make that decision, because maybe it is too difficult for us to get this specific.
I, I guess what, what I'd like to say, Tom, is I think, based upon your concerns and some of the things that have gone back and forth, that I'd like to keep this language in for the, you know, for the next go-around and, and see where we're at.
And that's fine, sure.
You know. Is that, can we do that? You know, I mean, we, we've, we've massaged it to a point, I think, and, and, and we have to be able to, everybody see what we're talking about.
And I think it'll, and you're talking about having it come back with some revisions in there that, yeah, so I, I think that's fine, that'll, that'll keep it moving tonight.
If I could have consensus on that and keep it moving?
Sure.
Okay. Deliberations and decisions.
Eric, did you get all that?
I got it, I got it, I got it, Eric.
That's what the video is for.
I see an intern sitting out there.
Deliberations and decisions.
Welcome to Janesville.
Communication. Conflict of interest. Gifts, gratuities, and favors.
I, I did have something.
McDonald?
Couple of things on the conflict of interest. The, the first one, I think conflict of interest should reference the, the statute, which is section 1946, because there is a statute directly on point to conflict of interest. So I think we should make that reference. And then the other, I guess, question I had about the conflict of interest paragraph is it talks about a direct conflict of interest, and I don't, I don't understand the difference between a direct conflict of interest as opposed to an indirect conflict of interest. I think we can, we either need to define direct conflict of interest, or else remove the word direct and just say, be a conflict of interest.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. So we're texting, direct?
Direct now.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it? Councilmember McDonald, we have consensus then on that?
Yeah.
Gifts, gratuities, and favors. Will you refer to the statute there?
Yep.
Confidentiality of information.
Yeah, I got something on that one.
Councilmember Stever?
The one thing on section two, it said, information obtained in closed session of a city coun, of the city council. We do have closed sessions of other committees, boards, and commissions. And I think it's important to see that this is the outline to include, board, commissions, and committees, that we are inclusive of that. So under number two, I would suggest that we include, or have it state, information obtained in a closed session of the city council, or other boards, commissions, or committees.
Okay. Understand that?
That would be the only addition, excuse me, because they're like CDA, we, we have closed sessions all the time. I don't know, the planning commission does, I think would assume that.
I've never been in one.
Okay, well, but there are other commissions that we're, we're setting up, the police and fire commission.
Okay. Councilmember McDonald?
Staying on paragraph two, I had a, a question of, it, it states, until such time as that information is legally allowed or required to be made public, when is it ever illegal to make closed-session information public? I'm, I'm, I'm aware of state laws that allow public bodies to go into closed session to have a confidential discussion, but I'm not aware of any law that says no member may discuss what happened in that closed session. My understanding is it would be legal for any person to walk out of a closed session and discuss what happened right after the closed session.
Paul, can you address that?
No. In, in, in general, you're correct. In, in a council-manager government, the only employee you have is the city manager. There are some personnel and employment bits of information that could come out in a closed session about an employee, and in your case, the only employee you would ever have that information about is the city manager, that by statute must be maintained as confidential. Certain financial information, health information, there's some others, it's in the 19.85 exceptions to the public meeting law. So that'd be a rare occasion.
Well, we'll need to address those then, because I think, like, tonight's closed session, there, there's nothing illegal about anybody walking out of that closed session saying what we talked about in there.
That's correct.
So, so we should refer to 1985 and clarify that?
Yeah, I think, if there's a statute, we should refer to that.
Okay. So, you have something else?
Yeah, I did have a comment on the, the first paragraph, confidentiality, confidentiality of information, because it, it reads, public official shall not disclose to anyone any information concerning city property, personnel litigation, or proceedings of the city, other than public information. We don't ever define public information. What is public information? Everything the city does is eventually public information.
If, if I could, could we defer this to the city attorney and have him take a look at this?
Sure.
Walt, would you take a look at this section for us? Okay. Councilmember Ray?
Could I just throw in a question then? Because I hear what Councilmember McDonald is asking, but also see the intent of, of Council President Brunner. I think what Council President Brunner is getting at is more what he considers to be the undefined fiduciary obligation of a council member, not to disclose material information that by law isn't required to be kept confidential from a closed session, from immediate disclosure, but something that might jeopardize the interests of the city, for example, like a real estate deal.
Like a negotiation.
Or negotiation parameters, or something with a collective bargaining unit, or, or real estate acquisition, or something like that. So, so which direction do you want me to revise this as, both or one?
Well, from my comment, I, I don't have a problem with, with us keeping things confidential. I'm just saying, we need to define what it means to be legally, or, or change that word to somehow, like what you just said, and, and I think what the intent of, of the council president was.
I, I think you've got the right intent, that should be there, is, that we are going for. If you could work on that and get us some language.
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Councilmember Raschkin?
Well, this is interesting information, but nonetheless, I guess I don't have a question right now, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stever?
I think one point that we need to look at is, are we structuring this policy to, in some cases, say that everything that the council has to do, has to fit into a legal boundary when we're talking about ethics? Okay? It may not be illegal to divulge information, but it might be unethical to. And I think that's one of the things that we have to draw that line for. And that's why I don't have a problem with the way it was written.
Well, yeah, I, I think we can let the city attorney take a look at that. I think he's got the idea, and we'll get that section revised. Okay? Use of, use of public resources. And, or Sam, did you have something to prove?
I just had a, I just had a question, thank you, Council President. I mean, we keep, everyone keeps saying ethics, 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 but it says code of conduct policy. I think that was the one that put, is the one that pushed ethics as the key word. Do we want to add that to this?
Initially, I wrote it as ethics and code of conduct, and I think the city manager suggested just code of conduct, which would include ethics. I take it is what he was, it was like saying, it was like saying conduct, conduct, or ethics, ethics, you know, repeating it, so.
I just figured since we're getting into the weeds, I'd go deeper, so that's all I had.
Okay.
I'm on your next comment.
Use of public resources, Councilmember Stever?
Section two, public official may use the city's name, logo, letterhead, or seal only when it's used representing the city of Janesville, or the body as a whole, and only with prior consent of the council. I would include or city manager, because you may have an incident where a board, committee, or commission needs to author a letter that the city manager could approve without council approval.
If, if I could, I guess, I, I guess I agree with you. I, I'd almost like to include the city manager or city council president, because there could be, there, there could be times that the city council president may send out a letter, which I did, for example, to the city, to the city of Beloit, thanking them for conducting the meeting. And we sent that on, you know, as the council president to them.
Violated a code of conduct?
Yeah, I violated my own code, but it wasn't, it wasn't policy.
I, I'd, I'd agree with that.
So council, council president or city manager?
I think that makes sense.
Councilmember Raschkin?
Well, it was about the same time.
Okay.
Basically, the points two and three is what I was referring to in part of my comments earlier, when it's referring to a member of the council using, because this doesn't address, I think, that which has concerned the council regarding use of title.
Okay, but this is different than.
This is, this is different, and this is that specific. Very good.
This is, this is different. This is.
Very good.
This is using the public resources. I see no other, oh, Councilmember McDonald, you had a comment?
The, well, the one comment I was going to make you address, which is, council president should also send letters on that city letterhead, because you did, and I got it.
Okay, thank you.
The, the other comment was in number three, and I guess it, I mean, it's nothing to change tonight, but where we refer to commercial product. At some point, the city's going to have some type of advertising campaign, and, and that may need to be revised, I don't know, we'll see. But something to keep in mind, I mean, don't let that affect us as far as our advertising policy is concerned whenever that comes out. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, representative of private interest. Advocacy.
All right, so I'll just, just bring that back up, because that was something that was brought up. And frankly, I'm sure that I'm not the first or the last to engage in advocacy, and I guess I am concerned for past, present, and future council members, and their good name and standing in violation of this policy, that this, this is language that, well, and it's also not enforceable.
Well, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's trying to, to set an awareness or, or a guideline, but I guess, for example, I don't know, we'll, we'll just say that, that you go to the Janesville Ministerial Association, and you get up there and, and you're making a comment, and you say, you know, you get, get to floor, and you say, I'm so-and-so, Janesville City Council member, and I think this is exactly how you should conduct your business, or whatever, have shorter sermons, or something like that.
Right.
Okay? And that's a personal opinion, and, so I think, you know, you get to floor and you stand up and say, hi, my name is so-and-so, and I think you should limit your sermons to 10 minutes, or whatever.
Right, the three minutes works really well for the council, you should try it.
Yeah.
I, I think that, that, that's where I really see importance of something that says that no members, no member of the council speaks for the entire council.
Right. I got a, just an example that I can think of in recent history, where the, a past council member, there was an issue that was in, in front of a legislative body up in Madison, and the council member went up there and presented his viewpoint on it as, and I won't mention his name, but so-and-so, Janesville City Council member. And in essence, what that did is basically said, I'm speaking for the body of the council. That, that is very inappropriate. Yes, you have a title of council member, but you shouldn't take and represent yourself in a fashion without consensus of the council.
With all due respect, if a member of United States Congress speaks up, they're not speaking for the United States Congress, even if they say, I'm a United States Congressman. That's why exactly, I think this could be a good thing about this policy, is to clarify that.
That, that was my comment.
Well, yeah, I, I think the whole thing is, is that, that we represent the entire city, and we, we represent the entire body as the city council when we, when we set ourselves forth as, as, as that person, or is that. And I think, I, I think most, most of us know when we're expressing our personal opinion, and we know when we're expressing a city council position, and, and because of a prior vote, or action, or whatever of the council. And so, so I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's our responsibility to, to make that differential when we speak. And, and, you know, no matter what, you're correct, people look and they say, well, that's a council member talking, I, I understand that. But, but if you say, this is my personal opinion, you know, at least they know you're not speaking for and representing the entire council.
I support that part of it, but I think we can go one step further, because this is something where this policy can be useful to the general public, by clarifying that members of the council do not speak for the council when they're speaking on their own, not, you know, when there's vote, no vote taken. I think it would be helpful to the general public to, exactly like you said, to clarify that, I guess, confusion.
Okay, so do you, do you have some language you'd like to?
Just English. No, none of that specific.
Okay. Well, we, we can look at that and try to work on that, okay? Okay. So that takes, hopefully takes your, okay?
Sorry, I, I think another way to look at this, Yuri, might be, this is being put forth as advocacy, so it's in the position that you are, we are, public officials, and we're advocating on behalf of the council. If you read this, it's advocacy. Public officials shall represent the official policies and positions of the city council, board, commission, or committee to the best of their ability when designated as delegates for this purpose. or committee to the best of their ability when designated as delegates for this purpose. So for whatever reason, maybe, that, that, that you're being selected as an advocate, as a delegate within city council, that, to go to this event, or to do this thing. So then it says, public officials when representing their personal opinions, because you're no longer advocating now, when you're, when you're, when you're sharing your personal opinion, you're not advocating in the role of a city council member, as you've, you're, you're delegated for this purpose of advocating for the council.
Are you saying, like, if you go to an Arbor Day presentation, and you say a few words about what a nice event this is, then you're speaking for the council? Because you were designated by the council to go to this event?
This is, this is.
And if you were not designated by the council to go to an event, then you have to make a clarification that you're not speaking for the council? I mean, is that what you're saying?
I guess, well, I don't want to get that nitpick. I understand what you're, the point that you're trying to make, but what I'm saying is, you need to read this policy for what it's worth, and this policy right now is about being considered an advocate as a public official that's been delegated, that's been designated to delegate as a city council person. Now, if you go to the Arbor Day, you can still say it's a nice day, Yuri.
But you don't have to say, I'm speaking for myself, this is a nice day.
Well, right, I, I'm not, okay, but I guess my point is, read the advocacy component as it states here, you've been appointed as a delegate of a representative of the council, so that would be like Council Brunner saying, Councilmember Raschkin, would you go to the breakfast, blah, blah, you know, whatever, and you say, fine, you're going as council, Yuri Raschkin, to the breakfast, representing city council, advocating on our behalf, because you've been designated as the delegate.
At that point, I can speak for the council?
Hopefully. Yes, yes. You've been asked to. Mr. Levitt?
Based on this conversation, maybe I can try to take some other policies and see what I can do, because this seems to be, I, I've seen several points brought up that maybe trying to rework this language.
Look at the language, okay, okay.
I mean, on this particular section, on the advocacy section, I'm talking about.
Councilmember McDonald, I think you were next.
Well, I just, and I guess I, to piggyback on what Eric just said, you know, he can take some other policies, but I guess my, my question was going to be, do we need to give some direction here, because it sounds like most people are fine with this policy? Should we vote on this to see if we're okay with this policy as it's written, and if we're not, this portion of the policy, then give something to the city manager to look at, as we did earlier, but if most people are okay with this portion of the policy, then perhaps no revisions would be required.
Yeah. Yeah. Councilmember Lieber?
Thank you, Council President. Well, I was hoping maybe we could just, to clarify, make advocacy two paragraphs, have it be public officials, et cetera, et cetera, and then paragraph two could start, public officials when representing their personal opinions and positions shall state when they are not, because it kind of, it's kind of like a run-on, so maybe if you made them two separate paragraphs, it would be more clarity just by splitting them up.
Okay, so we, we've got some.
Does that work for?
Disagreement on here, so if we take the advocacy policy and split it into two paragraphs using the current language, those in favor of staying it, vote yes, those that want to see change, vote no.
This is.
Change is the separate, the two?
If we, if we like the two paragraphs, but the words this way, then we say yes right now.
Yes, if you want to keep the language and just make the two paragraphs, and same thing.
Are you gonna reset? We, we've been requested to reset.
Same words.
He's already reset.
Okay, you're in the reset.
Okay, so yes means keeping it as is, and no means changes, correct?
Just changes, changes to.
To the language.
Oh, to the whole language?
This, no.
Changes to be announced.
Yes, yes means keep the language as it is, but, but divide the language into two paragraphs. No means you want to change language.
Start over.
And start over. So we're okay with that, advocacy will stay like it is, changing it to two paragraphs. Policy role of members. Independence of boards, commissions, and committees. I have received one request to change, and I think it's probably appropriate that most council members sit on some board or committee that they're appointed to, that we delete the last sentence. That council member shall refrain from influencing, because we, we are, we're part of that deliberation and part of that, that discussion. So anybody have a problem with that? Okay, harassment. Anybody have a problem with that? Positive workplace environment. Councilmember McDonald, you got a problem with the positive workplace environment?
I do, actually, no, that light was from earlier, because I was gonna comment on the, the independence of commissions, committees, and boards, but you brought that up.
Oh, okay. City attorney to render opinion on request. Implementation. Councilmember Stever?
The only problem I have with the, the whole portion of it is.
Talking about implementation?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Is, it talks about this is intended to be self-enforcing, and I understand that, and we, the ethical standards shall include, you know, that part's okay, but I think that what, what this portion of, or this heading is lacking is that there should be some reference at some point in time to a violation of the policy, and I don't know if that's a separate subheading, but the reason I, I say that is this, in checking, we right now, we don't have a, anything in policy that says if I'm a board member, or appointed commission, or a committee member, and I do something that, that is in direct violation from this, or I'm disruptive, and I'm continually causing problems, that there's, there's no means for removal, and I know that it's by assumption that if the county, the council appoints, the council can remove, but I think at some point in time, there should be at least some reference in there. Likewise, I think that there should be some reference for elected officials, that, that we are always open to, you know, censored by the council, I don't know if that, we want to go to that, that extreme, but I think that, that we need to at least inform elected officials, or remind them that, that there are consequences for their actions. I don't know how you go about doing that, and lastly, because even public officials that are appointed can be in violation of criminal law under misconduct in public office, there should be at least some reference to that in there, because I think that is a very large thing that, that's missing to this. We have to realize that if we do things that are not in compliance with state law, that we can be held accountable and in charge, and I don't have a problem with that, I really don't. Am I missing something that I?
No, we have my binder.
Your binder, your, the Bible?
Ethics code.
Okay, I didn't see who went, who was first, so Councilmember Lieber, you've been pretty quiet, oh, okay.
Thank you, Council President. I mean, I agree, I think, with a lot with Councilmember Stever's said, but I think, I mean, you know, the council giveth, the council taketh away, I mean, I guess that would apply to mainly to boards and commissions, you know, as far.
And really, the only people that can remove us is the public.
I mean, yeah, there's, there's, there's recall, there's, and, you know, there's, for your actions, there's consequences, they're called elections, you know, a speaker from the public earlier tonight, I think found that out the hard way, based on the demeanor that we address each other, either publicly, or by email, or phone calls, or whatever, but I wouldn't mind seeing some language in here, saying that, you know, if, if these policies are not followed, or, not followed, I'm sorry, I'm really tired, that, you know, there could be consequences or actions taken by a majority of the council.
Censor.
A censor, or something like that. That's all I had.
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
I guess, I'm, I'm not sure I, I support even going that far, because we have, we have enforcement here through harassment part, so if there is an appropriate harassing behavior, then carefully investigate it in accordance with the city of Janesville harassment policy. We do have policy that provides some enforcement. We have existing laws and regulations that conduct criminal behavior, or anything that falls into that category, I'm not gonna play an attorney here, and we have elections, and we have recalls, as, as we all know too well. Additionally, I think the council is able to remove, as it stands right now, I presume, we're able to remove people from committees.
There's no policy that says we can.
Right.
But, so it should be included in there, that they can be.
That they can be removed, and I think it's as, I think that's, if we've limited it at that, then I'm, I can support that.
There's two issues.
Okay, Councilmember McDonald?
If we're talking about a, a policy, or a suggestion to, that we have a policy to remove people from committees and boards, I'm okay with that for the ones that we're legally able to do, like we can't do the plant commissioners, owning board appeals, or something perhaps. The other thing is, as far as council members ourselves, I, I would suggest some type of enforcement policy as far as, you know, the, the word censure was brought up, you could have a, a private reprimand, or a public reprimand as well, you know, if we have a discussion in closed session regarding the conduct of someone who's perhaps violated the policy, but I would be, I would be fine with some sort of enforcement mechanisms in here, and it's, I mean, it's not gonna be anything that you're removed from office, or you're fined, or anything like that, but, you know, public, I mean, first, you know, privately talk to a person, if the, if the violations continue, then you publicly talk to the person, and ultimately, because we are public officials, the punishment comes from the public, and if you have a public reprimand, then you let the public decide what's gonna happen after that.
Mr., okay, Mr. Levitt?
Let me wait till it gets further along, because I had some questions, but now.
Councilmember Raschkin?
Here's what I'm concerned about, that if a council member does something that is considered objectionable, then now if there's a censure option, or any other option of private-public partnership punishment, then, then there's pressure on the council to do something, because you can't, you know, because, because now we have these tools, so, so we should be using them, you can't, you know, so that kind of allows the council to be more subject to, instead of having really no ability to, to affect things as it stands right now, and has stood since 1920, whatever, now we're giving these, ourselves, these tools that we will be expected to use, so I think that actually, potentially places more pressure on the council going forward, but, you know, it's, it's up to the council members whether we want to accept that.
Okay, Councilmember Stever?
The, the only point I would bring to that is, when you look at legislative bodies, in particular, like at the state level, or at the federal level, they each, each of the, either the senate, or an assembly, senate, house of representatives, each of those bodies have a way of governing themselves, and a mechanism to take and, to censor someone who has acted inappropriately within the confines of that, of their, of their duties, and I guess my point is, I don't have a problem with saying, if I, if I do something wrong as a city council member, that is so egregious, that my fellow council members take and meet either in closed session, or however we design this, that says, something needs to be done, and we are at that point in time, I don't have a problem with that, and I guess my question is, if we're talking about a code of conduct, and ethics, and everything else, why would you fear that unless you're fearful that it might happen to you? I don't know, I'm getting a little punchy here, but I guess I don't have a problem with a censorship, because I don't expect it to happen to me.
Okay, perhaps.
There you go.
Perhaps, perhaps, before we go any further, and I, and I know you just pressed your eye again, but.
I'm glad to listen to Council President.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Perhaps if we, before we go any further, I, I think I've heard, you know, two issues, you know, should we have some type of enforcement, or censure, or whatever, or should we just leave it like it is, and say it's?
Self-enforcing.
Self-enforcing, okay, so, so I, I guess, in researching this, and, and looking at this, when, when we went through it, and worked to draft the policy, you know, I did see various levels of, of enforcement, or censure, or, or something. Because the hour is getting late, and we're going to revise this, I guess I, if we get the consensus of the, of the council, I guess, I'd like to know, would we like to see a?
Violation.
A violation or enforcement section?
Yes.
Tom, yes?
No?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No. It's up to you.
What's he got?
Pressure zone.
We got three to three, yes?
Three, three.
Three, three.
If I can just chime in.
Sure, no, go ahead.
Here's my concern.
I'll let you, I'll let you get the last word.
Right, all right, okay. Thank you, Council President. All right, taking hypothetical out of this, let's say a council member goes to a dinner, and then leaves the dinner, and then everyone is expected to, and then everyone is expected to have an opinion, and then a certain council member states a very strong opinion, and, 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 you know, basically goes on record expressing their opinion regarding other council members' behavior, and doesn't work out so well, and loses an election. Does the council want to be in the position of having to make that choice, and having to be on record, and having to state their opinion, and then deal with the consequences? It's entirely up to the council.
It all depends which council member was gonna be censured.
And if that's the case, you know, if it's, if it's like, you know, I just, it's.
Let's, let's go again. Councilmember McDonald, you think we should have something further than just self-enforcing?
Yes.
Yes. Raschkin?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
So it's three yeses?
No.
No.
Can I, might I make a statement?
What?
Well, just, just realizing that, when you're looking at a, a type of enforcement, it would be with consensus of the council, it's not, I can take and force an issue, if I don't have the consensus of the council, nothing happens.
Well, it depends, well.
Go ahead, Mr. Levitt, because you had your light on.
That depends on the enforcement. If it's a private censure, it may not depend on the majority of the council. It may just go to the council president, they have to make the determination, depending upon how you want to do the enforcement. I've seen it in multiple ways. I've seen where you do a private, I don't think the council as a whole can do a private censure, I think it'd have to come from the council president. A public censure can come from the council as a whole, but a private would have to come from the council president. So then it'd be up to the council president to determine whether the complaint's valid or not.
I, okay, I, I guess what I, what I'd like to do, I, I'm not firm one way or the other, but what I wouldn't mind doing is sitting down with the city manager myself, and, and coming up with a couple of options, maybe some language, and then we'd have a couple of options to go about it. Is that okay?
George White-Traumman.
That's an analytic right there.
Real quick.
I just wanted to clarify my, no, I, I don't think, I think there should be a mechanism for appointed citizen volunteers to boards and committees. I think when it comes to council members, which are elected through state statute and law, and given power through the state constitution, you know, there's, there's recall and elections, but I don't think that there should be a mechanism for reprimanding amongst ourselves.
No, I, no, I, I think I understand, I kind of got the picture from both sides, and I think there's some, some issues here. I think there's also certain committees, commissions, or whatever, that we really don't have that kind of control over, and so if we're looking at that, I'd like to be able to come back with a couple of options.
Yep, that sounds good to me.
Okay, okay, I think that, that finishes the review of the, of the policy, so, you got your light on again for that?
I just, I just want to say that I have the utmost respect for council president, and this is fairly unusual for us to have this kind of a frank discussion in an open meeting, but if, if such is a requirement, then. meeting, but if, if such is a requirement, then I feel a need to, well, responsibility to, to voice my opinion. But I still want to, you know, voice my utmost respect for council president and every council member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I think, I, I think this was, was good to have this discussion in an open meeting, I really do, so, thank you. Okay, we'll continue then with number nine.